Good evening, my name is Jack Dearborn. I'm the Chairman of the Ware Zone Board of Adjustments. This is the June 5th, 2018 meeting. And we have three cases for this evening. We have case number 018, uh, excuse me, 0118. Variance, 1711 Building on a Class 6 Old Harbor Road. This is by Adam and Erwin in Dallas, 26 Sawyer Road, MAP 407-H-176 lot, in residential zone. And we have a case for a special exception. It's 0418. And it is Article 19, 19.1.10. And that is an auxiliary, uh, auxiliary apartment. And the case number 31 is case number 05118. That is a variance on Article 1711 Building on a Classics Private Road by Kristen Robin Renaud, MAPs 407-11, excuse me, 177 Sawyer Road Industrial. Okay. Uh, let me just state how we run the meeting, okay? Each, each application will be read. Uh, I shouldn't say it. Each application will be considered for hearing this evening. What I mean by that is we want to make sure we get the application, that it meets the intent of the board. We don't want to be hearing the application that's improper. So we'll make our shot at it and take a look. The members, I'll ask for a motion to accept. Everything's done in the positive. Yes means yes, no means no. So we don't have to get into double negatives anything like that. So, uh, once we decide to accept the case for this evening, and if we don't accept it, it'll be for reason, I will ask the applicant to come forwards. I will ask the board if they have any questions initially for the applicant to clear up that they might have being done or satisfying that. I will ask the applicant to, um, read the application, excuse me, read the five points of hardship in the case of a variance, or in a case of a special exception this evening, uh, read the special exception, uh, went through seven clauses, and any others that are required in zoning. Uh, after that, I will ask, and the board has no questions, I'll ask the applicant if they, please sit down. At that point, I will ask approving of butters for the variance, uh, if they wish to, um, speak. And we'd like one at a time. Come up, state your name if you will please, because we need to get the minutes down. And oh, by the way, you're on YouTube. We need to get the information correct. Most important is the minutes, because that's what the courts rely on in terms of any challenges. So, once all the approving of butters come forwards, I will ask for disapproving of butters. Okay? Uh, one at a time, state your name. When that's done, I'll ask for other boards, public at large. And then I will ask the applicant to come back up again and rebut anything that may have been said. And then we'll go through it one more time, approving of the butters, disapproving of butters, public at large, and other boards. Uh, when that's done, I will close the public hearing portion. After that, we will take, and, uh, we will take, for instance, on a, um, variance application, we'll take each question and individually and vote on it. The applicant needs to get at least three yeses, and, which means this leaves room for two noes. So, uh, I hope, look around here, I think we can see for each one of these cases tonight, five members. I'll rotate the membership. And, uh, so, um, basically, that's it. We don't want any questions or any comments from the, uh, audience, because we need to keep the minutes straight, because these minutes are taken by Chip and also backed up by the recording that we have running on the YouTube. So with that, uh, let me, uh, do the first thing. First case is going to be 118, and, uh, let's see. Malcolm, would you mind sitting in the audience on this one? And I'll invite one of the two alternates.
What's that now?
Would you mind sitting in the audience for this case? 118. I'm going to ask Gary or Don to step up.
Why?
Well, we're rotating people through. I'm going to step down for the second case, okay? Which Mike is going to take.
I'd rather not.
Well, I'm going to ask you to step up.
You haven't the authority to unseat me.
I'm only asking you for this case.
I'm not. I'd rather not.
Well, I'm asking you to do it. We do this all the time. We rotate people in and out. You can be on for the next two. I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're airing here.
No, I'm not.
You cannot unseat a sitting member of the board.
Well, I'm sitting here.
You have a practice of, of seating alternates when there is a space for them. But I've never had to sit out, and I don't think anybody else has to sit out to give, to make space.
I have. I have personally sat out of Mike on two occasions.
I think you're making a mistake, but, uh, I know, I'm going to stay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
I'm going to advise him out.
Okay, we'll do that. I will, I will clear this with Tom Carlson. I don't think it's unreasonable for a member to sit out.
For the record.
Demonstrated by just.
For the record, the only time you can seat an alternate is when there's a vacancy.
We're going to check that and report later. Okay? Thank you, Stu. Uh, Gary, on the left. All righty. All right, start. Is Mr. or Mrs. Dallas here? Good, I'll make sure.
I'm representing the Mr.
Okay. Your name, sir?
Charlie Cleary.
Thank you, Chip. Okay. I don't know where he is. That's okay. Okay, uh, just for my benefit, Chip, we have the original application, and we have the new application.
You have the new application. If you saved the old application, then you'll have it.
Okay, just, just want to make sure. So this is the 81018 revised, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Adam and Aaron Dallas, telephone number 603-552-8414. Uh, 3 Shasta Drive, London Dairy, New Hampshire, 03053. Owner is Christopher and Robert Renaud, 36 Old Dairy Road, London Dairy, New Hampshire, 03053. Property address, 26 Sawyer Road, Wren, New Hampshire, 03281. Tax map, uh, 407-Lot 176, residential zone. Okay.
Chairman, can, uh, should we introduce them?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, um, I mentioned this myself as Jack Dearborn already. Gary?
Gary Shelton. Uh, Mark Moretti, member.
Michael Meyer, member.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Thank you. Okay, um, any questions regarding the application? Do you mind, can I have a motion to accept the application? Gary?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, all votes in favor? Any discussion? All votes in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you mind, 5332. Okay. With that said, whoever would like to speak on behalf of the client, applicant?
That would be me, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you for seeing us tonight. Charlie Cleary, as I mentioned, for Adam and Aaron Dallas. Uh, and you have some background on this particular application?
Well, we had a hearing a couple of months ago, and we decided to rehear the case.
Right.
So, thank you.
Appreciate that. And that's why we're here. Um, I'll point out two general things, uh, that sort of keep in the back of your mind. Uh, one, New Hampshire is experiencing a housing shortage right now. Uh, that's going on throughout Southern New Hampshire. Uh, and secondly, there's been a need for New Hampshire to bring back, uh, the younger generations. Uh, that's been a push by the state legislature and the governor. And both of those things sort of play into this application in terms of public benefit and public good. You mentioned there might be some initial questions for me, or you want me to proceed with the criteria?
Any questions for the applicant? I think we've been through this before.
Yeah, let me run through the, uh, the application for variance then.
Please read the question and the answers for the five points of hardship.
Okay.
They need to be part of the record.
Absolutely. So the first criteria is that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, and that is because this property exists within the residential zone, where single-family houses are permitted by right. The applicant is seeking to, uh, build a small, single-family home on the lot. As I mentioned, there's a need for additional housing in, in New Hampshire and in Ware, uh, as, as well as we want to bring in young families. They contribute a lot to towns. Uh, I was once a young family man, and, uh, they do quite a bit for the town, uh, coaching and Cub Scouts and all sorts of activities. The addition of the, of a single-family, uh, family home on Sawyer Road, of which there are seven already, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor threaten the public's health, safety, or welfare. That's, uh, that's an important point. And in granting the variance for other houses on, on Sawyer Road.
Hang on just a second, please.
Sure.
I don't remember the number, so I'm going to tell it.
There are six.
No, how many total lots available out of the, uh, size of seven? I thought I remembered ten, I just want to check that. Uh, you have a bigger zoning map, Chip?
I can get you one.
I have a tax map, it should work.
You have a better one?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason is, these are all marked over, so that still has the problem. It's hard to see the dots. Dots means it's a house thing.
Oh.
So I just want to see how many.
Oh, how many houses?
Well, we know seven, you said that. I want to see it for seven dots, and I want to see how many lots are available, meaning I remember ten, I don't want to check my memories.
Okay.
Rely on it.
So, uh, may I ask a question? I'm not sure.
Sure.
The total number of lots in, in this development is ten? And four of them are under?
We're going to verify.
Pardon?
We're going to verify that.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's kind of what my question is.
I remember ten, I just want to make sure. It's been three or four months. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Dead Sea Scroll here, huh?
This is 407.
Map person.
Help me count that. There's one, two, three, four. Am I got the right number? Out of seven, a nine.
Looks like a seven, right?
One, two, three, four. Where is this one?
I have a copy of the subdivision plan, Mr. Chairman, if that helps. Backwood was carved up into lots.
I just want to make sure I get it right.
Is that the first one? So if you read them off, they have the dots out. So I have 176. 167 isn't a butter.
167 as well.
On a different road.
This is a different road.
Yeah. They're just listed as a butter. So, what?
175.
Okay, that has a house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four, three.
Okay.
One, two, three, four. Six, I got. How'd you get seven? Who came up with the seven? I just want to make sure, because.
That was visual, I think it was a visual thing.
Okay.
It could be off, it could be off.
Okay.
I got seven.
Where's the seven?
One, two, three.
Oh, no, I see seven.
Two, three.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Depending whether it's accurate.
That's not on the road, that's on, is that on three roads? I think that's just across the street.
Okay, we'll call the seven, closest.
I'm good.
Okay. And how many unbuilt? One, two, three. So it looks like ten.
You're not a lot further out, you're actually further in.
Right.
We're not arguing what that is, we just want to know how many in this subdivision.
Get a feel for it.
Are we okay with ten total, three unbuilt, seven built?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I want to make sure we got this stuff.
Yeah, good to get it right. So the, the other seven houses that were built on the, on the Classics Road must have received variances, and therefore the ZBA must have determined that this road, at least at those times, was appropriate for, uh, buildings and residential use, with no detriment to the public interest. The next criteria is that the variance is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, because while the ordinance does prohibit building permits on Class 6 roads generally, the Town of Ware has determined that in certain cases, where the road is passable or feasible for use, that they will allow dwellings on Classics Roads and Ware. And I don't know the extent to which you've allowed buildings, permits on other Classics roads. I'm just talking about this road.
Typical criteria is, does it satisfy the needs of the life and safety?
Right.
Emergency vehicles.
Right.
That's sort of what the whole thing around 67441 is about.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And I, there are, there are people living there, and I assume that we would have some public safety officials here if there was a problem for this one.
Not necessarily. I mean, if they'd already been granted before ZOE, uh, which was 87, 88, uh, they wouldn't need any. I mean, it's only when you require a building permit for a lot, that does not have built on, does this issue come up?
Right, but wouldn't they, wouldn't they be ringing the bell if there was a issue with this road? No? Oh.
Only, to my knowledge, is typically that's viewed when, uh, a building permit. That's the only reason why that is addressed. They can't shut anybody down, goes on a substandard access.
Right, right.
I don't know how you could do that after that.
Okay.
That's, that's my thought.
Okay, that's fine. So since the, the underlying spirit of the ordinance is that residential zones are for residential uses, and since this is a residential zone, and this building lot meets all your other requirements, except the fact that it's a Class 6 road, uh, we feel that the spirit of the ordinance is met, uh, in this particular case. The next section is that by granting of relief by variance, substantial justice will be done in light of the single-family residential purpose to be served, and the existence of the other single-family residences on the road. You looked at the maps, this particular area is becoming sort of a 10-lot community, and...
We're going to stop this. What's the real question for number three? I know this is going to be very painful for a lot of people, but you don't have a correct question. And I specifically insisted that be ducked. You missed the word "because" calling. Technically speaking, you're asking for a variance against a different question, and that's out of order. Okay?
Okay, so you need the, you need the question verbatim.
Oh, yeah. That was specifically.
Okay.
I thought it said.
Yeah, I didn't understand to that extent, okay.
So, I'm going to halt the meeting right here, and you're going to have to come back with a proper application. Because if we pass on this thing, and somebody don't like it, they can challenge you in court, not to the correct challenge. Our decision in court, because Devon asked the right question under our rules.
Well, my job is to answer the question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, my question, my point is, that's the question you've got.
Well, I can, I can read it into the record, but I don't think we need to come back.
I think you do. I, I'm heated about this. I don't want to go through this thing again. I specifically looked at your thing you sent, and sent where it says. Make sure the right questions are on here, okay? It may be overly conservative of my part, but I'm never going to lose a challenge in court, because we didn't follow the procedure.
Well.
I'm going to, I'm going to close the case. You won't have to re-notice. Well, I tell you, I'll do this for you. I'll continue the case the next month.
This is the application that already came back once, please. This is the application, it's already come back.
This is going to last much longer. It isn't correct. We're hearing a case for something other than what our town council advised us on for the question. That's why I asked for this to be sent back and told, tell you through Chip, that you got to have the exact question in here. And we have shut other programs down, other cases done before. I'm not going forward, somebody wants to challenge us, they can take an easy route to court. You're an expert, I'm not. I'm not willing to put my town and/or our town council in this position.
Okay?
Sorry.
Point of procedure, Mr. Chairman. Um, we had a chance to accept this application at the very beginning, and we accepted it.
Different application.
Pardon?
Different application. Different application. This is the revised application. It doesn't have the proper.
Which we voted to accept.
No.
We voted the original. We moved in second to accept the application as presented.
Okay.
I don't, I'm, I want this as just a matter of record, because I want this to be clear. Um, I just.
I think, I think that is.
Personally, you don't have a problem going forward with what we've got in front of us.
I do. It's a matter of principle. So.
Well, but.
We're going to find out what's going to go on here.
Yeah.
Please, please hold it. You lodged your protest, you offered to read it to the record.
Yeah.
So, for the board, I'll entertain a motion to continue this case to the next month, and have them come back with a proper language on the case. Possible the other questions would have the same problem. I'm not going to go be the quality assurance for the applicant. Okay? Motion to continue this case till next, next, uh, what's the, what's the meeting? What's the meeting, Chip? Do you have a date?
The 11th, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Have a second? Motion, please?
Uh, move to continue case 0418 to the 11th of July, noon.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, 400. We're happy to take the case up next month. We want to have the proper language. If this is the record for court, if somebody challenges.
I understand what the record for the court is.
And I was told not to hear a defective application.
It's not defective, Mr. Chairman.
But. Matter of.
You've already made your decision.
Thank you. Okay, this, that's it for this one, we're going to go on to case, special exceptions. This is, uh, 408, 4018. Philip Turo, Jesse Lynn Turo. Hey, I'm trying to hold the meeting, folks. Thank you. I like to be respectful. It may not look very respectful, but I appreciate that. Property address, location, 140 Barnard Hill Road, tax map lot 409-191-2, residential zone. This is for a special exception. And it's for 19.1.10.2. Yeah. All righty. Stu, uh, why don't you, why don't you come back, and I'll step down. Mike, you got to take this one?
Yeah, all right. All right, as Mr. Dearborn said, uh, this is for case 0418. If we could go around one more time, just to, we're reseating the board since, if everyone can just go around one more time and introduce themselves.
Gary Shelton. Mark Moretti, member.
Stu Richmond, member.
Mike Meyer, member.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Okay, um, once again, this is for a special exception to, uh, 19.1.10. Um, we will take a look, what we have, once again, is an application, it is signed, we have an unbutters list. We have some drawings for proposed, uh, proposed addition, second and first floor plans, warranty deed, and a tax map. And, second map, looks like just a expanded version. Um, I guess we should, uh, move to accept application 0418.
Move to accept.
All right.
I'll second.
You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's 500, or 50, excuse me. Okay, um, I probably should have asked, but, uh, who's here to represent this case? Come on up, introduce yourself.
The both of them? Yeah.
Yeah, probably just one.
All right, I'm Jesse Lynn Tetro, I'm the property owner at 140 Barnard Hill.
All right, very good. Typically, we'll have you read the, uh, the application, special exception, so basically just read each of the, uh, the items and, uh, your answer.
Yep. Would help if I knew how to use this phone. All right, so, um, the specific site is an appropriate location of such use or uses in terms of overall community development. So, um, we're actually going to be building on top of the existing garage, only adding 16 feet to the overall width, so falls well within the property buffers as they exist. Um, the proposed use will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no significant reduction of real estate values in the neighboring area. So, um, it's solely going to be for residential living space, it won't impact, um, the neighborhood at all in terms of that, as it already is a residential area. The proposed will not be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle traffic or pedestrians. So, again, no nuisance or hazard will be created, as this space does not impede traffic or pedestrian areas. The proposed use will not cause an undue burden on the town through the provision of basic town services. There will be no additional town services needed as a result of this. Um, let's see. Adequate off. Adequate off-street parking be provided if determined necessary by the zoning board of adjustment. So, there actually is plenty of parking there. It will still remain, once we're done building. A buffer may be required to screen neighboring uses from the proposed use. Buffers may be fence screens, dense planting of suitable trees and shrubbery, or natural occurring shrubs and trees. So, it's actually pretty well screened, as is in terms of, you know, there's a thick tree line on three sides of the house, so. And then, the zoning board of adjustment and granting any special exceptions may include such restrictions or conditions to ensure compliance with this section. And of course, we are prepared to comply with the board as they're, as were asked.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, one question. What's your, I'm trying to find it here, and I can probably figure out with a floor plan, but what's your total square footage that you're adding?
744 square.
Livable, please.
Livable, please.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I drew it, so...
Oh, there it is. I was just trying to find that.
I was gonna say, it's probably on here, yeah.
I looked right at it and didn't see it. Sorry about that.
Any other questions?
It's the handwriting.
Okay. For a special exception, it's pretty much, it's pre-cut and dry, it's right here, that you've answered these questions. There's eight conditions specifically for an accessory dwelling. And, like I said, a lot of them you've already answered. Incidental to the property, so basically, not exceeding 750 square feet, which you've indicated in your plan that you're not going to. It shall be either constructed in or constructed within or attached to the, to a single dwelling, which you have indicated. There must be one interior connecting door or other access for persons to pass between.
That's what the first-floor floor plan is. It's, the mudroom is actually connecting to both areas of the house. So, there'll be one entrance that goes into where we live right now, and one entrance that goes upstairs into the new livable space.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
Septic system design capacity, shall we approve the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services? Has that been addressed?
Yes.
For the additional bedrooms?
Yes, I believe it's already...
It already is.
Yeah, it's already a four-bedroom septic. We currently have a three-bedroom house.
Very good. No new entrances or exits for the accessory dwelling shall be constructed facing the front of the single-family dwellings.
Nope, there's one man door being added in the garage that's off to the side, not facing the road.
All right. Two parking spaces shall be provided for the accessory dwelling, and no new curb cut from the street will be constructed.
Nope, not necessary.
All right. And exterior construction materials shall be uniform with the single, the existing dwelling.
Absolutely, yep.
And either the accessory dwelling unit or principal dwelling shall be the principal residence in the legal domicile of the owner of the property, which is you.
Yep, will still be living there, absolutely.
So, by my recollection, you've complied with all the requirements for this exception. Basically, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, I think we've covered it all. Pretty straightforward. All right, thank you.
At this point, we'll ask for approving butters to come up. Are there any approving butters that'd like to speak? Okay, disapproving butters? Town at large or other boards? Okay, so no comments from anyone? And if there have been, we'd offer you a chance to rebut, but, and you're welcome to come back up and speak again if you'd like.
No, sounds good.
Very good. All right, so with that, move to me. Close the public portion of the hearing and get on with our discussion. So, anybody have anything to discuss? No?
I think they've crossed all their teeths, darkened their eyes.
Very good.
And we, we accept the exception.
So, move to approve the case. Move to approve the exception?
Yep.
Okay. And you have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? It's 5-0. Congratulations, you have your exception.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Girbert, you wanna come back up?
Thank you. Do you want me to sit down? Sure. Good job. Those are... God.
All right. Chris and Robner Renault, 603-434-0974, 36th Old Dirty Road, Illinois Dairy, 43053. All right, address, order of the same. Property of this is 407 Lot 117 Sawyer Road. Okay, for purposes of this case, I'm gonna ask to go around the room again. Name, please?
John Rogers, Alvin. Stuart Richmond, member.
Jack Deavoyne.
Michael Meyer, member.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Okay. There is a... I put hardship itself out. Butters. Picture of the house. Looks like a site with relief. And a piece of a tax. Very good. Applicant, for the safety? Would like to speak on the, accept the application?
Mr. Chairman, you can move to accept. Yes. Okay.
Any questions regarding the application? Being none, I'll accept a motion to accept.
Move to accept.
Second. In discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Would you please read the question in your answers, so we can get it into the record?
Number one?
Number one.
The granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, because the structure that we are intending to build shall be within the building code for the town aware, with appropriate frontage setback and sidelines. Additionally, it shall not put any undue on the surrounding environments or already established community, with as minimal alterations to the landscape as possible. This proposed building will not lessen the potential value of the property.
Number two, please.
The variance requested will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, because the ordinance exists as a set of regulations to guide the construction and the development of the building within the town aware, which is exactly what we intend to follow throughout the proposition.
Number three, please.
And through the grade granting of relief by the variance, substantial justice will be done, because this lot has been vacant with the last, with the last efforts to develop it for over 30 years ago. This is exemplified by the previous plan plot, perk test in septic design. Substantial justice will be done by granting a variance, because this picturesque lot of land was intended to be built upon.
Okay, thank you. Number four?
By granting, that by granting the variance, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished, because the surrounding properties will not be diminished, as there are already numerous year-round homes on this Class VI road, and will be adding to the existing community. We believe the development of this property will, if anything, raise the value of the surrounding area, rather than a vacant lot.
Would you please read 5A, A and II, please?
Unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property, that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists, because general public purposes of the ordinance provision and specific application provision of the property. And the proposed use is a reason for one.
Did you do A, II, yet?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, okay.
Please describe the special conditions of your property that diminish, distinguish it from other properties in the area. The special conditions of this property are that it is on a Class VI road, which limits the granting of a building per mile.
Read the bottom piece.
I'm sorry.
Read, please indicate how...
Okay.
That question.
You want me to read that question? Okay.
Yes, and the answer.
Please indicate how, owing to the special conditions identified, identified above, your property cannot be reasonably used to, used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. The ordinance, Section 7.1.1 states that no building permit should be issued on any Class VI road or private road, being that Sawyer Road, being that Sawyer Road community has existed for years within the Class VI road, a home could not be built while, be, while being in conformance with the ordinance. Therefore, it is paramount that a variance be granted in order to develop it on this lot, as denial of the variance would result in undue hardship, as development of this land could not be, could not occur within its reasonable use.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant before we go forwards? And ask for her to sit down, so we can hear the...
I have a question, I'm not sure. It's more of a clarification. We have to deal with what the hardship is here, and, and, so what is your specific hardship in this case? Is it the ordinance itself? You can't, you're not allowed to build on this road. But, I guess, part, it's a two-part question, I guess. What distinguishes it from the other lots? What makes it different?
Yeah, my husband speak, Chris? Okay.
Well, the only thing I could say, the hardship is that, you know, we've worked hard to buy this piece of land with the intent, and the fact that, you know, when, the forefather before you had approved it as a subdivision for a building lot, and that we bought it within a ten, so financially, it would make it difficult for us.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Being none, please sit down. We'll ask any approving butters wish to speak on this, on behalf of the case. Being none, or any disapproving butters wish to speak.
Hi. Lisa Corleone. We're lot, my husband and I are lot 170?
180.
180, sorry. 180. I'm just, you want me to go over the same things I went over last time?
Same things.
My plan, okay. Oh, yeah.
Get another shot at it.
Okay, so this is nothing personal about anybody building on our road? It has to do really specifically with the condition of our road, where it is right now. I apologize, because again, the other neighbor who wanted to come and talk tonight has to work, so he's left me on my own. We...
Do you have a note from that neighbor?
I don't. He was going to send me one, but didn't get there, yeah. Sorry.
Speak for yourself, because a lot of people do bring in notes from other neighbors.
Yeah, he was supposed to.
And that'll be acceptable.
Got it. He did help me with my notes, so we're good.
Okay.
So, a couple things. There's no one person in charge of maintaining our road. There is no road agreement, so the weight of maintaining the road comes down on just the few of us who actually participate and maintain it. There are currently, I believe, six houses on the road who have year-round, or five, maybe five who have year-round. There are a couple of camps as well. So, at this point, with the houses that are there, and the damage that's done just from us going up and down the road, it's almost, it's just absolutely more than we can handle to take care of it. The road washes out, it's too narrow in the, in the winter, you can only have one car going up, up or down. If somebody's trying to come up when you're going down, you get stuck. In the spring, it's muddy and it's a mess. Anyway, it's, it's really rough. But, one of the two neighbors who currently plow is actually moving this summer, so he will no longer be there. He is taking with him the snow blower that we use to widen the road that I paid for, so I'm not in any position to go buying another one. That is unfortunately going with him, because he has the tractor. The other neighbor works hot hours, so he's not always home, so plowing doesn't happen. And it is my understanding that the Realtors who are selling these properties have told the people buying the properties that the plowing's just taken care of, and that's not the case. Several times, even four-wheel-drive vehicles have gotten stuck on the road. There isn't a person on our road who doesn't own a four-wheel-drive vehicle, because it's impossible to make it up in the winter without one. The hill actually ices to the point where four-wheel-drive vehicles go crossways. Twice in recent years, I've had my neighbor, if my neighbor had been on the other side of me, I wouldn't have gotten off the road. There's no way a tow truck could have gotten me, because they would have had to have chains and sand. This past winter, as an example, there were several of us who were unable to get to work one morning, because there was a tow truck dealing with an incident in one of our ditches. So, I was stuck for a couple of hours. There's only one way in, one way out, there's only room for one car. There's absolutely no way for an ambulance or a fire vehicle to get up and down our road on many days during a winter, typical winter. The road is just completely ice-covered, so it's a real big safety issue for us. The other thing is that we've experienced flooding in the past. There's one culvert, and when that floods, we have to park our vehicles on their side. There's not ample parking for the current residents of our road, let alone more. When our road is iced over, we have to park either on 149 or down at the bottom, in a couple of spots where we've tried to keep plowed out. Again, there's not room for the current residents to park there and walk up, let alone more. Let's see, sorry, I've got my notes here. The last time that a road, that a road went, that a house went in, the road agent, who is not the current road agent, just for clarification, he told the builder that they had to improve the road to Class V standards, and I have spoken with the road agent, which is what he has told me would be his expectation, that hopefully the town would require the builders to improve the road to Class V standards, so we wouldn't have the issues that we have now, especially with more traffic. The last time that happened, the builder was completely incompetent, and unfortunately, extended the road in order to make it wide enough, filled in our ditches. So, they were told that they had to maintain ditch lines, they did not maintain ditch lines. The road was widened, we ended up with washout. Some of those things have still not been corrected. That builder also dumped a boulder in the way of our culvert and never fixed that. He was also told to build a maintain, a wall. Matt, there was like some sort of a, actually, you remember? Retaining wall?
For drainage purposes.
Yeah, the retaining wall fell down in six to eight months. Nobody, we were, it was never repaired. So, we expect that if anybody is going to build on the road, and there's going to be more traffic, that the town would require those people who are building to upgrade the road, and to, and it would be inspected by a town employment, employee, and it would be done properly this time, not, not have the issues that we had last time. So, thorough inspections, et cetera. So, I do have photographs, I do have video of what our road is like in the winter, I have photographs of what it's like in the spring, so...
Do you have photographs you wish to leave with us?
I have them on my phone. So...
I have a part of the...
Yeah, part of them, yeah.
You accept pictures?
Yeah.
We don't have a capability to play in a video.
Yeah. I'd have to play it off of here. So, but it's, just, just to prove that the road is not wide enough, it's not safe.
Okay.
And again, if the town is going to require somebody to... And again, if the town is going to require somebody to widen it, which they certainly should, that needs to be inspected by somebody qualified from the town, and done by somebody who actually knows what they're doing. We can't have what happened last time happen again. It washed out all the gravel we brought in, it's, it was, it was really not okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other rebuttors, disrevering rebutters, or wish to speak?
Yeah, if I may.
Name, please?
Matthew Grolian, Lisa's husband, we're also same lot, lot 180. Just real brief, I'll keep it brief, just wanted to make a couple key points that, uh... One key point is Sawyer Road is accessed via Jewett, and I'm sure many of the board have been out there maybe to take a look at it, walk it and see it. So, the slope of the road is significant, and due to, as my wife mentioned, those ditch lines having to be maintained, there are significant drainage issues which come across the bottom section of Jewett and where it starts to climb up. I would definitely argue that it is a safety issue, especially with getting a large fire engine up there. Ambulance, maybe, fire engine, November through March, I, I don't think it would be, it'd be like a 50/50 maybe shot on a good day. There, there have been, our home was built there right about that time the board had mentioned, about 1987, 1988.
Eighty-eight, yeah.
So, yeah, we've, we've lived there. We did purchase it in 2001. To my wife's point as well, there is no formal road agreement, you know, so it's on us, so obviously there's great concern as, as a resident and a taxpayer that, that there are those existing issues. Now, with all due respect to the applicants and the landowners there, I know they want to sell their property, but there are multiple lots there, and, you know, our concerns run pretty deep in the fact that we, we're the ones that have to maintain it day in, day out. The plowing is obviously a big issue because we have two, two gentlemen we rely on for that, so. And that's all, that's all I had, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other disrevering rebutters wish to speak? Okay, whoop, not yet. Public at large? Yes. Thank you. Name, sir?
Good evening, my name is Robert Berry. I own 44 Sawyer Road, so I'm not a butter, but I am a member of the, the neighborhood who has an interest in this as.
Just so we can figure this out.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what number the lot is.
You live at the street, 44?
44 Sawyer Road, yep.
You'd be able to look for it?
I could probably point it out really rather quickly.
174.
Thank you.
174, wow. You're off by one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't bother to look at them.
I just want to make sure when people, we put it in the minutes, we understand what we're looking at.
Sure, understood.
Okay.
So, I won't.
You're towards the end of the road.
So, he's 175 or 173?
Four. Did you said four?
I, I'm not quite sure, quite honestly. I'm 44 Sawyer Road.
Why don't you look at this and see if you think you're this one? We have to say unfortunately. I am... Hold on one second. This is Jewett Road.
Jewett. I'm 174. Close.
Close right the first time.
All right. All right. So, I won't repeat what Mr. and Mrs. Grolian have already gone over. I've shared many of the same experiences they have. In the winter, occasionally does ice over to the point of glare ice. I've had the experience of sliding down backwards, having to use their driveway actually to turn around so I could actually go forward. It's, the road is not easy to maintain. Every time any effort is put into regrading it, putting down new gravel, it washes out within a week. It's mired in potholes. It's, there are some real safety concerns about, about ambulances, fire trucks. I sometimes fear whether I'm going to get my oil if it runs out at the wrong time. So, it's, it is a concern living on that road. Like Mrs. Grolian said, I, I'm not here to rain on anybody's parade, or have, I don't have an issue with that, but I just, I do share the same concerns in terms of the road would need to be upgraded if we were to support any more residences on that road. And with that, I'll take any questions, or I'd be happy to sit down.
I'll be happy if you sat down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public at large wish to speak?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Patricia Turner. I live on 731 Deering Center Road, that's lot 153.
Do this again. Okay. Would you figure out where you are here? This is Jewett Road, this is the road of entrance right here.
This is 152. 153, okay. Big lot.
Is that where you live right there?
See how it says Oliver Road right here, and it stops right there?
Oh, yeah, off the spur. So, you're.
There's actually a little graveyard.
Are you this one?
I'm right here, this, yeah.
Oh, big chunk?
See this, see this little dot right there?
Yep.
So, you own two lots there then?
No, this, uh...
Because this is lot 151. This is 153.
That's 150, that's the lot I have.
So, there's no house that's indicated?
There is here.
Oh, her fingers are away.
That's the cemetery, that 151 is the cemetery.
There's a dot there, somebody's looking in.
Somebody's looking in.
Okay.
That dot, that's my house.
Okay.
Right there, see how it says 7, it says 731 because I.
Oh, yes.
See the 200 road frontage right there?
Okay, so we'll make you.
And that's there, we're hearing Center Road right here.
But this, this would have a line across it, so 151 is your house lot?
Yeah, 151 is, there's actually a cemetery right across from my house right here.
Okay. Good.
I see that. Okay, cemetery.
And the Luther Lot, right across from my house.
Okay, so you're on.
Right there. So, so we use this, we use this road.
Santa's Road?
Oliver Road.
Oliver Road.
Yeah, right there, Oliver Road, and we have to use it in the winter because our driveway is so steep right here in the wintertime, it's even worse than Jewett Road. So, we, we actually use this road, same as all Sawyer residents do, in the winter.
Okay.
Even in the summertime.
Okay. Do you have any other comments you wish to share with us?
Uh, yes, so, um, so as already been mentioned, there's problems with the ditches, with mud being very soft, people sticking in the mud, and we have to, you know, being good Samaritans, we try and help these helpless victims of our road. I remember one time a cesspool truck got stuck at the, at the junction of Oliver Road and Jewett, and if you can imagine, there is no way an ambulance is going to get up and down during that time, we had to wait. So, there was a block above the cesspool truck and below the cesspool truck until a tow truck could come and take out the cesspool truck. So, this is just one example of many, I could give you many more examples of people getting stuck, either because of mud or because of ice, or they, they're driving too fast and they get wedged up on the bank. Right now, as we speak, there are two big stones sticking up out of the road, and sooner or later it's going to tear out someone's muffler. So, you know, I think the point is well made that we're having some issues maintaining the road, and the reason why all, my, the way, the reason why I came and why my neighbors came is because we're concerned citizens. We're having trouble keeping up with this road, and we're not sure what the answer is. It's not that we don't welcome new neighbors, but there's a very, very strong concern about added burden and added traffic on what is already a burdensome problem for us. And, you know, this causes us problems with deliveries, with delayed deliveries. I had a problem with receiving medication recently. My husband cleaned out the mailbox down at the end of the road on Route 179 so that USPS could leave packages for us so that we don't have to take time off from work to go and get our deliveries. We have problems with falling leaves in the ditches. I personally take care of clearing branches and trees so that they don't keep encroaching into the road. I, I contribute with paying for equipment and gas and maintenance. My husband provides all the labor for plowing. He not only does Oliver Road, but he also does Jewett Road sometimes, when I need to get out to work. And, so I've been living there, we've been living there for 16 years now, and we've seen, probably seen it all. Everything you heard tonight is true. We've had floods, ice, all of that, and if, if there's anything I can say is that I think one of the reasons why these properties are so attractive is probably because they're attractively priced, relative to other properties within four miles of these lots. There's a development right across from the Avon store, there's also another one near Duck Pond, plenty of lots there, probably pricier than this, and that's why people go for these lots, and.
There's a reason why it's priced.
There's a reason why it's priced that way. Is there, there's a hidden cost there and it's not, not visible, so we just want to make that clear, and that there is a hardship, there is a payment for it, you just pay for it later. I just want, I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Other boards? Are you a board member?
I'm, oh, I was gonna.
Not yet. You might stay right there. Okay, do you know boards? Okay, you now have an opportunity to reply anything you want to reply.
You haven't heard the rest of the public comments though?
Oh, I, I asked those other public comments. Okay, come on down, sorry.
Mine is quicker, I promise.
No, that's okay.
My name is Penny Savage.
I put this away.
I know. I have a, I looked at it, lot 149.
Right there. So, you are on.
I came prepared.
You're kinder her neighbor on the back.
Brent and Pat, no kinder, absolutely their neighbor.
Do you access off and Oliver, or do you access off 149?
It depends on the season.
Here's the house. Yeah.
In the wintertime, um, the shared driveway is completely passable.
You've got problems enough with Oliver Road without.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, not this person's problem.
Right, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, that I just want to have on YouTube for record.
Sure.
Is that a lot of times, and I'm, I'm not saying you guys at all, I think that you're far more educated about it than, than this. We did have a, a family move in to a spec house, and, um, Brent and Pat and we worked on, on the road, and I went down with a bill, and I said, you know, it's part of their deed, and I said, you know, this is your, your part of, of what's required for, for dirt maintenance, and they said, oh, yeah, we were wondering when they were going to get around to that. The road was atrocious.
Who was going to get around?
They.
Who's they?
The town. Well, that's what I said to them. And, and this is what, the point that I, I came up here to make, is that I said to them, there is no they, it's we, it's, it's a community, and I think that the real estate agents and builders do a disservice to the community, to the town, to the buyer's expectations, that if development in, in this area were to flourish, then perhaps a, a strategy is to look at towns taking back their Class VI roads.
Wow.
Which is not.
Let me just stop you right there. There is a process in the state of the Hampshire, it's called a FEDMENT assessment. If you can petition, pick for some of the landowners on that given road, Class VI road, petition the town, and the town will consider it, go get the drawings, get the bids and all that kind of stuff, and basically tell you how much you're a special tax.
Like a village district.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, there is a means of doing that without coming here. I mean, any Class VI road, the town who regulates Class VI roads owns it, is the Select, Select Board. They're the governing body under 67441, those are the people. So, even if you get justice here, something gets justice here, you're still going to go see the, uh, the Select Board, because they have, there's two shots to get through. One is from the variance zoning aspect, and one is to get use of it from the town, so. So, those remedies do exist, do get into issues where not all roads in town are 50 feet wide. Three rods, some are two, you might be up to two, I don't know. So, that becomes a complicated issue.
I don't think we're two rods.
You don't know, some are in town, that 33 feet wide, hundred about, just another issue of that.
Right.
That is an opportunity for people to take care of, and it's really a civil matter because the town doesn't, that's why it's called a Class VI road.
Right. But, if you continually to, you continue to develop on Class VI roads without actually having these growth strategies in place, it's at the detriment of everyone.
True. Townware chose to wait until 1988 to put a zoning package together.
I wasn't here in 1988.
I know, I'm just saying, there's a lot of downsides from delaying zoning in the town where, and people thought it was a good idea back then, so it took us forever today to get it passed. I'm just suggesting that other remedies may not be palatable because not everybody wants their road changed. It's a civil matter between the people on the road. But I just wanted to point out, the Select Board are the ones who govern the use of the road, gives you permission to use it, not you, but the act.
So, like I said, I just wanted it on YouTube, that when you're talking Class VI roads, there is no they. It really is the, the community, and that has to be taken into account. Right?
Thank you. Thank you. Another person who wishes to speak as public? Not yet. Still working on public.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not part of this, I'm not in this.
Oh. I'm confused, sorry. Come on down as public.
My name's Adam Dallas. I'd like to speak as, as public at large in this.
And you, you live in town as a resident?
Not, not currently, in the Town of Wire.
Public at large has been for the town.
Okay, then I, I may have misunderstood that. Would you like me to take, would you like me to take a seat?
You own property in where?
We were attempting to purchase property in there.
Okay. The owner could speak. Okay. Other boards? Have we exhausted public at large? Other boards? We done, ready for another rebuttal if you wish?
Yes. All right, well, you guys knew ahead of time that this was going to be coming to meeting, and normally you guys go and look at the property. Did any of you guys go and see the, the road and the condition of it? And, and did you, did the last couple of weeks?
Month.
Yeah.
It's probably improved since then.
Right. I mean, I was out there today, and, and the road was in good, in great shape, and yes, there is a couple of boulders in the road, and they, and they do need to be taken care of. The, the other thing, I mean, a number of the residents have been here in town for quite some time and moved into the property knowing it was Class VI and in rough shape. The last two houses that were approved by the town.
On that road?
On that road. Uh, I think one was maybe seven years ago, maybe another, could have been 10 years ago, so I'm not sure of the, the exact date, but they were required by the town, the board, before signing off with the building department, that the, that they met the towns. department, that the, that they met the town's, um, road commissioner as to what they wanted to see. So, it's just kind of interesting that, you know, prior people did go before the town and did get signed and approved and meeting the town, and I, they, they did widen the road and took trees down. But I understand what these people are saying. I mean, it's, it's obvious, it's, it's a, it's a dirt road and dirt roads need maintenance. And what you recommend is probably what really should happen out there, is people try, and, and I'm sure that's what these people would like to do, is to get the town involved of, of some sort, but, you know, that's something that, that, you know, has to happen. But as, you know, in winters, as any dirt road, you know, they're, they're pretty treacherous in, uh, New Hampshire. But as of this point, most people can pass one another on the road. The road is, it's, it's a bit tight, but it, it's not that horribly tight as far as turning around up at the top there. I, I had a great big truck semi flatbed bring my backhoe up and was able to turn around at the top up there. Uh, trust me, it wasn't that easy for him, but, uh, you know, oil trucks, uh, fire trucks, they can get up there. Come winter, I mean, no, that's a whole nother story. Uh, you know, winters are tough, and I, I think this past winter was, was pretty tough. But, I don't know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, does, I'll ask if there's any approving rebuttors and put on the list. If you have something new that may have come up as a result of the rebuttal, feel free to come up. If it's the same thing over again, be brief. I just ask that. So, approving rebuttors, being none? Disapproving rebuttors, wish to rebut something that the applicant has just spoke of? Being none? Public at large? Being none, other boards? Whoa, one more.
Patricia Turner. I, I just want to say that I have studded tires, my husband has studded tires. So that's made the difference for us in the winter. And we consider it a necessity to get up the icy road, because it is very, very icy in the winter. And, uh, to the rebuttal, um, I don't know what the laws were when my house was built. I don't know, and what, what I do know is that there were fewer residents, and therefore much less traffic, and so less work in terms of maintenance. When you add more residences, if you have, right now we have 12, and if you count two cars per 12 residences, that's 24 cars. And then you add two more residences, you add four more cars to that, now you have 24 cars going up and down the road. So it just adds to the burden, and that's the only point that I want to make. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I am going to close the public hearing. Any questions from the board before I do that? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing at, it's like 8:49, uh, 8:44. Okay. I'd like to propose some conditions, if people vote yes. And the conditions we usually put on roads such as this, be it a private or a public road, is basically three conditions. The first one is, to prevent the next buyer of this house from buying it with the assumption they're on a class five road, we ask that the applicant file in the registry of deeds a Town of Ware liability disclaimer. As a public record, if somebody buys this, should we pass this, can we buy this, uh, place? It would be noticed by the title company, so, and hopefully the people of America sign in it for sale. Okay? That's the first one. The second one is, uh, when you leave the class five road, which happens to be Route 149, uh, there should be, should be right now, but I noticed the other day there is not, unless I missed it, a posting, it's about four by four in size, four feet by four feet, and it basically tells the casual passerby, uh, if somebody should visit you or somebody comes up with an oil truck, that is a class, it's, it's a transition of a class five to something other than a class five road, be it class six or a type of road. That takes care of the casual observer coming up to your property. And the last condition we've been doing over the last three, so, the years, is because currently now have two things. We have a, um, what is called a driveway plan, and it is a set of specifications for steepness, uh, or steepness, the radius for turning, the surface width, depending on the distance, and if it's long enough, I don't know the exact number, but, um, it requires you to, uh, have some way of passing, uh, two vehicles. And that is for life safety issues, for fire, police, and, and, and... And that is a reasonably stringent requirement. And the person we have, uh, do that, we should say, the board we have implement that is the Board of Fireworks, and the agent who will often actually do that is the fire chief. And that's the people that in Town of Ware we, we rely on, and he would make recommendations. So, in order for that building permit to be obtained, should we pass on this, all those conditions must be met, and the upgrade of the road up to the person's property, which requests to be made across class six roads. So, in the past, we didn't have a rigorous driveway access. We used to have it coming six feet off the class five road, needed an apron during this time. We have since gone from a life safety issue where we go to the residents. So that means cross jurid or soya road is up to the applicant to meet the conditions placed. So it isn't a blank checking. Just want to make sure. Now, that doesn't make everybody happy, but this is typically what we do, because we need to ensure that life safety vehicles can access the dwelling. So, I think in the past, there's some question about how well, uh, the road agent and how well a contractor did. Uh, today, we actually have a specification that's well understood, and the board and the individual we use to validate that that's done correctly are, are either boards that are elected and/or, um, fire, fire chief that we have. So, with that understanding, I make those three conditions. Uh, I don't think 911 signage is necessary to do.
Well, I've got to throw that in anyways, because we don't know that. So, there is a requirement in Town of Ware that every road is uniquely named and identified. And since 9/11, um, 2011, 2001, excuse me, September, there's been this big initiative nationwide so that fire safety people respond, they get toned up and leave. They're not wondering what, what road it's on. It has to be a unique road, and it has to be numbered signed. So, there's a criteria that's established, and I believe the fire chief does that as well.
Wendy.
I'll make that note.
Wendy does that.
Sorry?
Wendy does that.
Wendy, okay. Somebody in the town.
So, those are, I mean, those are the reasonable requirements should we find this, and we're going to take a vote. Each, like I said before, each one of these five questions has to get three yeses. It doesn't have to be the same people, but it has to get three yeses, and that's why you as a vote, you as an applicant have the right to five votes. So it's easy to get three out of, three out of five, and it is three out of one, three out of two, three out of three. So that's why, very specific about this. So, with that, assuming these conditions to be established, um, motion to, number one?
I'd like to make the motion, um, on... Put me in this space?
No, because, um, well, I guess you could, so it is definitely down. Okay.
To accept, not to accept, but to, uh, grant, in case there's 0518 with conditions, conditions being one, uh, liability disclaimer needs to be on file in the county. Number two, it needs a road posting signage, uh, at the beginning of the road. Number three, uh, the, the requirements for life safety need to be met. The responsible parties being the fire chief and the road agents and...
Fire chief? It's not the road agent.
Okay. Specifically, uh, referencing the, the upgrade of the, the road to the property.
And 911 compliance.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion? Second?
I'll second article.
Okay, in discussion? Being none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
So it's four, zero. Zero, excuse me, four, one. Okay, uh, motion to accept with the same conditions? Don't read them off.
Move to accept, uh, part two with the same conditions.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
So it's four, one? Okay, uh, three please?
I'm, uh, four, uh... Number three, be acceptable?
With the same condition?
With the same conditions.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, one? And, uh, what?
I also make the motion to accept number four, with the, uh, same conditions, uh, as the first.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Being none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, one? Uh, five in its entirety?
Move to accept, uh, part five in its entirety with the stated conditions.
Thank you. Uh, second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Being none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. Very good. It passed. Now, like I mentioned, the board takes it very seriously, the life of safety getting to your place. Notice for anybody who buys in the future and wants this built, and any casual observer is visiting you can claim they didn't know. Technically speaking, that sign should be up on the transition of class five. Signs disappear in the Town of Ware, they never really never were. I'm sure at one point there was one, that'll have to be reestablished. And 9/11, I suspect the road is properly labeled. Uh, I don't know what the requirements are on particular, uh, counts. That's up to Wendy to make that determination. That is it for the cases this evening.
You also need to go to the selectmen for approval.
Yeah, this is just stop one. I mean, we give you permission under the variance zoning package. They own the road through the RSA 67441. They're the ones that give you permission to use the road. I didn't make them up. This is, this is the state RSA. Sorry for any confusion, but, um...
Thank you.
Okay, we've got, um, we've got minutes?
Yep.
Isn't it big with orange? It's all four feet by four feet.
I must have been blind when I drove up there, because I was looking.
Well, it's, it's supposed to be like, this big. It probably was. But it may not be compliant to go Town of Ware's side notice, like maybe 30 years ago. Thank you, thank you.
Just to let you know, I'm not going to vote on the minutes.
You weren't here? Were you here? You weren't the last time? You sat down? Yeah. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can I ask you to leave unless you want to listen to the rest of the meeting?
Excuse me? Would you carry on your conversations out in the hall, please?
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies, we'd like to get on with the meeting. Thank you. Page five? I just want to clarify what I asked on the, the end of the first paragraph. Malcolm Wright stated that the abutter's concern is encroachment. Um, I'd like to read, Malcolm Wright asked, the abutter's approach, concern was, was encroachment. I was trying to get them to clarify their...
Let's get this.
You're going to vote on the...
Okay.
Minutes?
Yeah, we're doing the minutes.
Yeah, you can't close that door either.
No, that can't be closed. You can throw the...
Let's open it right up.
Further away. Ask them to go in the Emmy room.
Open it right up.
Would you rephrase that, Malcolm? Malcolm Wright stated that...
What page?
Ask. Just, just, just cross "ask," because I wasn't making a statement, I was asking him for her to be...
Okay, "ask."
Yeah. I was trying to clarify what she was trying to, and I asked her if, so, your concern was encroachment. So I asked her if her, her concern was encroachment. I didn't make the statement, you know what I mean? And I believe she answered me yes.
Go ask them to. Go in the other room, meaning the upstairs. Still on YouTube? Okay, you get your concern, uh, Malcolm?
Yep, that, that one, I got one under.
Explain what it was, because I don't think everybody heard that. I, maybe Chip, if you got that.
Malcolm Wright asked that the, if the abutter's concern is encroachment.
Yeah.
Where was that on?
Page five.
Page five, first paragraph, last sentence.
Good, okay, good.
What's the next one?
I can't find it anywhere here, and I, I, I want to bring it up and have it inserted, because the last few meetings when we've had a variance issue, when the applicant is done speaking, I've asked them specifically what your hardship is. They said, so your hardship is that you can't, you're not allowed to build on the road. And they, so far they've all answered yes. Um, I want that to be clear in the record, because, because of the five points. There's supposed to be a hardship issue, they get up there and they talk about it, and they, they beat around it, but really, the only hardship... but really, the only hardship they, they bring up is the fact that the ordinance won't let them do that. So, I've always asked that question, um, and I asked it tonight as well. It was here, and like I said, I, I can't find the context for it here, but I know I asked the question. They gave you their hardship. They've read something for five B. Oh, I, I understand that. I'm not asking to rewrite that. I want, I want it to be in the record, I asked the question. I'm just saying, they gave an answer to it. Pardon? They gave an answer. Everybody has read some answer off of five. I'm not getting my point across. Yeah, I know, you want to have them regurgitate something back that you're happy with. They met the intent of the law, they answered question five. I know what you're saying, you, you don't buy what their answer is. No, honestly, I don't really care what they say, unless they say something stellar. What I care about is the fact that I asked the question, and it's not in the record. Because that's...
Say here, Malcolm Wright asked the intent of this law.
That was in the beginning.
You could put it in, in that. Please, because this is their answer to five B. Please indicate how the special condition you had, the variance necessary to enable a reasonable one. And you could say Malcolm asked what the intent...
What is your hardship? Give it. He's going to, he asks it every time. You could fix the minutes, it's going to come back the next time. If he wants to repeat himself, we'll make sure we put him in the meeting minutes. The reason I, I'm asking this question, the last three of meetings at least, and tonight also, is, is because we have the issue about the no votes. And, and one of the, the concerns was, there's no explanation for the no vote. There's no explanation for the vote, and I want that in there, so it explains the no vote. I don't... But I think you're missing the point. The fact they could write a one-word answer now, is their answer? You vote whether... I'm not. You vote whether it meets the intent of the question.
How's this, have we put this in that same paragraph about the intent of the law? Malcolm asked specifically what the hardship was.
That's good. It's fine. That's pretty much what I do.
But understand, Malcolm, I, I think you did, that hardship pertains to the property.
Right.
Not, not to the individual.
No, I, I understand that.
Okay.
It, it, see, it pertains to... I think people are missing the point. These questions are not for a 17-11, for every variance under the sun. Meaning that, there could be some question of, you already got a use for your house, why do you want something else? Maybe they got this gigantic rock, they can't drive around reliably, and they don't want to go through the money a blast, and so they want to alternate the roof slightly. What's the hardship? The big rock. Here is the road. So, I'm not giving you the canned answer, I'm saying, think of these questions in the broadest sense of every possible conceived variance that could be out there. These are the only five questions we got. We don't have special questions for class six roads, private roads, or somebody's deck being too close to a property line. These are a generic set, set out by the, um, RSA's, the state legislature. It's our job to interpret the answer given by the applicant. That's what I just want to say, because too often we get focused on, this isn't a very good question for this type of variance, well, it's the standard set of questions for all purposes. We don't tweak these questions for given cases. I don't know if that helped, but... Okay. I understand completely what you're saying. But I, again, I don't think you understand my intent. Well, I understand, you, you don't think they're giving you a good enough answer. So, you vote no. Okay.
I think Malcolm's point is different than what Stu was saying.
What's that?
You're asking what's your hardship. Stu was saying what's the hardship on the property.
I know, I'm asking the same question. I'm, what, what is, that, that's a bad question on my part, if that's taken that way. Because I've, when I ask the question, it's always after they spoke, after they've had their, their say. And I get the context from what they say, it all boils down to, because the ordinance says I can't do it. And that cannot be complained, that cannot be claimed as a hardship. We got to move on, we beat this.
Am I still in?
Yes.
Just you go.
Yep. I'd like to bring this meeting to a close. Would you like to second that?
I accept the, uh...
Thank you.
Two minutes. Accept the minutes from last meeting.
That's moving on towards closing.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on it?
As amended.
Being none. All those in favor? As amended.
Aye.
One action for me, I'm going to contact Town Council and find out who has the authority to seat members, and if it's clear in the case laws. I'm sure I'll get an answer on the bill. If it's not clear, I'm going to ask them for a recommendation. I need to tell you something, okay? No. No, listen to me. Listen to me. I just felt a little ambush there, that's all. I don't mind. Just listen to me. I took the action, I'm telling you what my action is to this board for the next meeting. Let me finish. I'm going to ask the Town Council what the appropriate method is under the RSA's, how it pertains to seating the members on a case. Okay? I'm going to do that. So, we'll find the answer out next meeting. I hope by the time you can get back the answer. For that, any other business before? Being none? Uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.